We can proceed now. Moving on to routine items, consent items. 1.0 Personnel. 1.1, I need a motion from superintendent's recommendation for personnel action.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
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 Moving into business, 1.0 Policy Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for policy BCB revised. Discussion first reading, school board member conflict of interest.
So moved. Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.2 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for policy DAC new. Discussion first reading, federal fiscal compliance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.3 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for policy DJB and DJBR new. Discussion first reading, federal procedurement.
So moved. Second.
Is there a discussion? Can we have a role call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.4 Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion for policy DKC revised. Discussion first reading, expense authorization for reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.5 Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion for policy GBEA revised. Discussion first reading, staff ethics and conflict of interest, anti-fertilization.
Fertilization.
So moved. Second.
Second. Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on 2.2, I mean 2.0 Grant. 2.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to apply for health beginning active future grants through QuellStar.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 3.0 Resolutions. 3.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for resolution number 17-006. Can somebody go? Yeah, who's someone going to read it? I don't know. I guess you'll have to. Resolution number 17-006, Board of Education, Adams County School District 14. Resolution to affirm Adams 14 as safe and welcoming for all students. Whereas, the mission of Adams 14 is to maintain a multicultural school community dedicated to the realization of the full intellectual, physical, social, and emotional potential of its students. And whereas Adams 14 is committed to providing a safe and welcoming learning environment in order to increase achievement and access for all students irrespective of their immigration status, national origin, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, sex, and gender identity, socioeconomic status, disability status, or beliefs. And whereas, education plays a critical role in furthering tolerance and inclusivity within our society, and whereas the United States Constitution provides for equal protection of the law for all persons. Whereas, the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin, among other factors, by public elementary and secondary schools, Title VI, and by recipients of federal financial assistance, titles. Oh, Title IV, Title VI this time. And whereas, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974 prohibits social, excuse me, prohibits school districts and their employees from disclosing information from a student's education record to a third party without the prior written consent of a parent, a legal guardian, or the student. And whereas Adams 14 seeks to protect the safety and well-being of students during the school day and during hours of approved extracurricular activities, and Adams 14 shall strive to protect each student's rights regarding interactions with law enforcement officials. And whereas the presence of federal immigration law enforcement officers on school premises or during school activities will disrupt the educational setting and exert a chilling effect on student enrollment and attendance. Now, therefore be it resolved that Adams 14 reaffirms its commitment to providing all Adams 14 students the same right to a free public education and associated school services and equal treatment regardless of their immigration status. Be it further resolved that Adams 14 will not seek or maintain information regarding the immigration status of any student or family member for the purpose of fulfilling the student's residency requirements, age requirement, or other reason, except that it will inform students about circumstances in which a determination of citizenship status is a prerequisite for establishing a student's eligibility for scholarships or other financial awards. Be it further resolved that Adams, that Adams 14 shall post the resolution at every school location and distribute it to staff and parents in the most commonly spoken languages. And be it further resolved that if a court of law declares any part of this resolution to be contrary to any statute, regulation, or judicial decision, the validity of the remainder of this resolution shall not be affected. Thank you, Timmy. Okay, I need a motion for resolution number 17-06, resolution to affirm Adams 14 as a safe and welcoming for all students.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 4.0 Other. 4.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need, I need a motion for the approval to purchase HP Chromebooks and cards to support Adams City Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to 4.2 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to purchase HP Chromebooks and cards to support Kearney Middle School.
So moved. Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 4.3 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to purchase Voyager to support Adams City Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on to 4.4 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval of Suncor's Boys and Girls Club of Metro Denver contract extension for 2017, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to 4.5 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to the member random of understanding between CU Boulder and Bueno Center in Adams 14.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-cred role call.
Yes, yes, I got, I got a discussion. Do, do the teachers know that already ahead of time that this is going to be provided to them?
Yes. I think it's been announced and then teachers that want to participate in the program are all invited.
So they all, so they know?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, can we have a role call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 4.6 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Isabel Cordova, DBA, and CNC consultants.
So moved.
So one second.
I'll second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Have we ever used this consultant form before?
Ms. Borges, could you help us with that, please?
Isabel Cordova has been here with us. She's working on content learning, content language objectives with each school, as well as she's done walkthroughs with administration and coaches, and she'll continue this work. It's ongoing work. We have to make sure that our teachers are well-equipped to provide the correct language objectives for students and student achievement.
My next question is, is it effective? I mean.
Well, this is the first year that we're looking at language, content language objectives. And the purpose of content language objectives is that every student that we serve, especially at 87% free and reduced lunch, basically come to us low on academic language. So the purpose of training and empowering our teachers to deliver instruction in language, our goal is that student achievement improves.
I think I might have said it wrong. If she's effective, the question is, if we used her before, do we have any data saying that her work is what we, is good?
Yes, well, I agree that her, yes, I would say she is effective. She is very professional. She is very clear and easy to understand. She has delivered professional development for our administrators as well as the coaches, school coaches. This work has just begun. She began to work with us, I believe, in March, and that work will continue next year.
Do we have any, say, for instance, some in writing to say what she has done? Because last year, sitting on this diocese, we used people that weren't effective, and we just approved, 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 and we didn't get no outcome out of it because we're in the situation that we are. I'm saying for myself, do we have anything in writing or anything from the teachers or anything that's showing what she done in this district for us to, to read?
And I think I can help you with that, Mr. Thomas. I think one of the most important things that we're going to get into next year is very, very much accountability. And just like I spoke earlier about, we have 1,000 students on read plans. We're going to keep decreasing that. I think we'll be able to find the effectiveness of individuals that come into our district because we have too many students that are English language learners that are staying on that track from kindergarten through high school. We have given a directive to Dr. Conno and his staff that we want to reduce this number as quickly as possible. So the data that we're going to have coming will help us determine how effective these individuals are. But our goal is to not have students in the ELL program for like five, six, seven, eight years. We want to get them in the program, try to exit them as quickly as possible.
And to add to that, do we have something that supports the work that she's done? Absolutely. She completed a summary of the work that, of her walkthroughs and the recommendations. So that can be shared with you if you'd like. And we've also have a clear contract of the work she's going to do next school year, 17, 18 school year.
Board President, I ask that we table this till we see her summary of what we paying her to do. Because this is not, this is from the general fund and it's not titled, no title fund amount. So in September, and this is May, so we can table this for at least a month to, or the next two weeks, because I like to read what is her recommendation she's doing in our district.
Absolutely. We want to make sure you get that. You wanted to add?
One of the things that I wanted to add is, to your point, Mr. Thomas, where you wanted to know if Isabel Cordova's work was effective with ours. We're completing our end of year evaluations because she worked directly with our coaches, which then in turn work with our staff of our teachers. So as we complete our end of year evaluations, as we're closing those out now, we'll see if she's effective through the work of our teachers, through their data of their random evaluation. So we can produce those reports once they're closed out, and then we would see the results in our student achievement as well with her direct work with the coaches and then supporting our teachers as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. So who oversees her, then?
She's working with teacher, with Cynthia Trinidad as well as with myself.
But isn't that your guys' job to do all this?
Absolutely not. Sometimes you have to bring in the experts. Con, yes, you do.
I thought you were the expert.
I am an expert, but I oversee many projects. You have to think about the scope of the work that a chief academic officer is responsible for. And as it is, I'm working solo when previous to me, there were four people in that department.
Okay. So why would we extend a contract before having data to back it up?
I don't understand your question about the data. What we are doing is addressing the needs of our students. We, they are deficient in academic language, and this is a framework to provide that academic and professional development to assist our coaches and our teachers in delivering best first practices.
Well, I agree that we should table it.
That's fine. And I'll make sure that you get the documents you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess two half says that they would like to table it. Do we need? Yes. We need. Connie, would you?
I don't know how much we could have on it, you know, because she just started in March. So it'd be really hard to bring a lot of data in because of the short span. That's what I.
I definitely want to share this, and that is that the work has just begun. You cannot expect teachers to receive one day of professional development and be effective in implementation. This is a work in progress. That's why you mentioned that. We don't want to drop it. We want to continue it, and we want to empower our teachers.
This helps a lot of our second language learners. Am I correct?
It helps all students.
All students, but.
Specifically.
We're high in that, and you know, if we could get them in their own language, really testing, we, it'll, the data will be there to show that they're improved.
Over time, the data, the data will support that this strategy is effective. You have to give things, I guess you have to give any strategy that you implement time to show growth, but more importantly, I think we need to give teachers time to develop the strategies that they're being exposed to.
I, I don't think we should table it because I, we need to get our kids moving. And this is for our children so they can further their education, you know, starting down and moving up. If we catch them in, in grade schools, you know, by the time they get to the middle school, the high school, they've got it, you know? So I, I don't know. I, I say no. Don't table it.
Timmy.
I agree. Because we've got to move forward. We have to continue to move forward. This is an evaluation tool that is going to help our coaches and everybody else, and every decision I make is based on what's best for the kids. So I say we don't table it. Let's move forward.
Okay, I just, also I see here it's $13,500 and it goes for the full year, which I see that it's worth to do this and try to get our students where they belong. I mean, we've just had a bunch of teachers says we don't make right decisions for our students. Well, I think this time we got to make the right decision, that is, continue with the, with this individual helping our coaches and teachers. Okay, any other discussion? Grab a role call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Moving on to 4.8 Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion for the approval to award the RFP to American Products for Fresh Fruits and Vegetables.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a role call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta? Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to four, I missed 4.7. Approval to contract with Metal Gold Dairies for Milk in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab a role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 4.9 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Rocket Mountain Service Solution as the primary chemical sanitation supplier for nutrition services.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. I see here that we've added the Boys and Girls Club to this. I just want to know, why are we cleaning a facility that's not within Adams 14's realm? And also, go ahead. Yes, Naomi.
Nutrition Services feeds kids at Boys and Girls Club. We feed them supper.
We just gave them $65,000 and they're a $179 million corporation.
Yeah, we feed them through the Child and Adult Food Care Program. So the meals we feed them, we seek reimbursement from the state.
I understand.
And so I have kitchen staff there who cook meals out of their kitchen, and we need cleaning supplies.
My point is, why don't they purchase their own? They have $179 million.
So we, we provide the operation, the cost to have the employee and the food, and then we collect the reimbursement. So we're not really, I don't know how to say this, but we're running a business out of Boys and Girls Club. And having chemicals and cleaning supplies, we need that to do that, to, to feed kids. So does that answer your question?
Sure.
Any others?
Thank you, Naomi.
All right.
Go ahead, Ms. Q. Ladies first. Ladies first.
No, I was just going to say that it's part of, if I'm correct, it's part of the contract that when we agreed, we would provide certain services for the boys and girls, and most of those kids are our kids.
Only 65%.
Well, is that most of them? 65 is bigger than 50, so. But it's been part of our, because I was part of that program through the ILC who started the, the food and all that. So I know a little bit about it. And those kids, that's how they, they, in the old days, they used to come latchkey kids. So this is how they're, they're taken care of. And a lot of these kids, like this Carol Martinez, she just got that Daniel's Fun. Colors here. She was part of that. She started in the ILC daycare before and after school. She progressed to the Boys and Girls, the Suncor. So this is what our money does for our kids because they have a safe place to be. And it's a lot of money, but.
Why wasn't it provided before, though?
It was. It's always been provided, always. See, and, and I could tell you a little, I could tell you a little bit about it because that was my department. We had money through the grants, and a lot of that food was paid through, through 21st Century Grants and all that bridges, and we had all these grants coming in. So that's how it was paid for. And we've always had it since Boys and Girls started over there at Kearney. It's, it's nothing new. It's just that we make sure the kids are fed. And it's not a really big meal, if I'm correct, but it's food for them to sustain them until their parents pick them up.
Well, this is for chemicals, it's not for the food.
But they need to be cleaned. Do you see what I'm saying?
And it says in here that the new bid price is for 13 sites when it previously was for 12, if I'm correct.
Can I further explain?
Please.
So we have nutrition staff at Boys and Girls Club. In addition to chemicals, SFS PAC provides training to the staff. And we have a lot of regulations we have to follow with the local health department, Colorado Department of Education, USDA. So they're not just providing chemical, they're providing training. But a nutrition services employee, one of my employees, goes to Boys and Girls Club Monday through Friday, cooks and serves meals. So that's why we add on Boys and Girl, because it's my department serving the kids.
My question is, though, like Ms. Quintana just said, if it's 65% of the, of the kids is Adams 14, well, who paid the other 35%?
The Child and Adult Care Program reimburses us for every meal served at Boys and Girls Club.
That's what I was saying, how it came through.
It's a separate program from the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. So National School Lunch and Breakfast only reimburses for students enrolled at Adams 14. The CACFP reimburses for a specific group of kids within a program, so Boys and Girls. Or another example would be like a daycare center. Any other question? Thank you.
Okay, hearing, no further questions. Grab a role call, Monica, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to 4.10 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract between Adams 14 and Homies Unidos.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab a role call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Earlier, 4.11 was dismissed or gotten rid of, so we'll move on to 5.0 Discussion. 5.1 Equality Assistance Center Survived Findings and Recommendations.
I did. Two weeks ago, on April 24th, the board received a, a report about Adams 14 School District, K-12 School District Climate and Workplace Environment Survey. And I'm not, I forgot the lady's name, but my question is, are we as a board going to implement her recommendations in this district?
Doctor, was it Dr.?
The lady.
From Metro.
Dr. Parra?
Yeah, Parra.
So the question is, with this board, are we going to take up her recommendations on page 1 and 101 dash, and 103 in that report, recommendations, what we should do about the OCR of her recommendations in this district?
I believe, Dr. Patterson, you want to add some stuff?
So I have spoken with Dr. Para. We haven't had an opportunity to meet yet, but when I spoke with her prior to the survey coming out, we are looking at some bullyproofing programming, as well as some training around workplace, around anti-discrimination and anti-harassment programming, as well as just looking at some general trainings that we need in our, our district on a yearly basis or even twice a year. And so we haven't got in, into detail on what the bullyproofing program will look like, or the reach training program will look like. But we will have those conversations within the next week or so.
I would like for the board to get an update, not monthly, but an update of one oh, page one oh five about those recommendations. Review the survey findings with students, review all survey findings with parents. It was this page right here, page one oh five. The bullying, code of conduct, everything. And it's based on the OCR report. And I didn't see none of the OCR report in that presentation. So if this district's trying to move forward, we still need to continue keeping the OCR updated and let the, let everybody in this district know that we's taking this serious, because it is a serious matter that they have done with our families and students in this district. So I'm asking this board for a recommendation or consensus that we get an update of the recommendations that was presented to us, not at a board meetings, but your updates you give us on Fridays, saying that this was done, this is implemented, we taking care of this. So we need to know as a board that this thing, this is not being set on the shelf and nothing is getting done.
Also, just like you mentioned that, I believe in the beginning of the year, or what, two years when it first came out, I guess I was the only one on the board. When OCR came in and gave us fourteen things that we were found guilty of, we had reached ten. So at the beginning of this year, there was four that we had to work on. We, I have, yet this board has not heard anything. Have we done any of those four? And maybe it's part of the list that Mr. Thomas has read. So, yes, it'd be nice if we knew where we stood, if, if we can get some kind of update every other week or somewhere on where we're at as far as the OCR is, because that's, was mandated by them. And wanna get out of their bad graces.
I do have that information. And we have met all the agreements to resolve with the OCR report. And I can put that in the Friday update.
I would like to see, from what he was reading in the survey, the, the bullying really worked on. Cuz that's one of the biggest complaints the parents have with their children. And, cuz I live where the kids come through, and there is a lot of bullying. And I know it's off the school grounds. And sometimes I sit in my yard and I'll holler at them, "Hey!", you know, like to cut it out. So I, I, my biggest concern is, it is the bullying that the kids encounter. And they're not gonna tell on the other, their peer, you know, because then they're in double trouble.
But also bullying there, wasn't that, I, I don't have mine, but it's also staff being bullied by...
It was. But you, you know, staff, I, I'm not excluding them. But when we send our babies out there into school, we wanna make sure they get to school safe and they come home safe. And they're not picked on by bigger kids or a group of kids. Because once they're off the playground, then it's open game, you know, for the kids. And I, a lot of times, will sit outside till they pass by to make sure those kids that come through my street get home safe. So I would like to see that it more, I don't know if you wanna call it pressure on the principals, that those, you know, when I was trained, and I'm gonna be honest, and I know it was thirty-seven years ago. But when I was trained as a para, we were trained, and these people now probably couldn't take it, but we were trained, when you go out on playground duty, you do not stand around talking to the other adult. Your job is to walk around those children, monitor what they're doing. And so many times, I go by the schools and all the staff is standing there, talking. And I often comment to my husband, how, what if one of those children get hurt? They're so busy doing their own little thing that they're not gonna see. And, you know, kids have their own stories when it happens. I wanna make sure those kids are safe on the playgrounds. And I would like to see more of it when I go by the schools. And I'm not stalking them. I live here. So I wanna make sure that they're safe, you know. If a kid really falls off of a playground equipment, that's what happened. They fell. But I don't want them, you know, coming in and saying, so-and-so punched me because they didn't like me, the way I was dressed. But, and I would really love to see the staff, Dr. Brago, walking around those playgrounds. It's good exercise, believe me. I'm just concerned about our children.
Okay. And that's what Dr. Para and I will work on.
Okay.
When we meet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did wanna mention something. We did get surveys back regarding the Parent Engagement and Satisfaction Survey. So that was turned in on May fifth. So all schools were gonna, collected all the surveys from parents. So by June, or towards the end of June, each school will have their individual report. As a part of that survey, there was an equity piece around welcoming school environments and such that we'll be able to also dissect in its most recent information related to parents' response or feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have my consensus. All right. I guess there's a consensus. You wanna restate it there, Mr. Thomas?
That the BOE gets on your Friday updates, the recommendations, and those recommendations of Dr. Para?
I think it's gonna be Para. Para?
Yeah, Dr. Para. Also, the recommend, the recommending training modules, she, she suggested to that the board, we'd like to know what's going on, when it's gonna be implemented, or when is it gonna be implemented? Cuz she gave us, if I'm not mistaken, linking it about eight. So that's what I would like.
Okay. We have a consensus. Joe? Good with it?
Yes.
Timmy?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Of course, Harvest and myself. So we have a consensus to make sure that we're kept updated with Dr. Perez's recommendations. Any other discussion?
Did that also include a new employee handbook training? Is that one of her recommendations?
Yes.
Is that, cuz that's gonna be implemented pretty quick. We're hiring people all the time. Are they?
We, we'll do a new teacher training day.
We do a new teacher orientation for new employees, starting in, in late July, early August. So that's when they'll get that information.
And is it something that they sign, that they've went through the class? Or how, how do we monitor if they've attended the class or not?
They'll have to sign in.
Okay.
Okay.
Or given an award?
I'm sorry?
Or given a certificate?
Um, we'll get some kind of professional development certificate.
Any other discussion? All right. Moving on to communications there. General, just last time, I forgot to mention that the Adams Fourteen Board of Education has participated in different ways at the Memorial Day Parade, which will be held on Monday, May twenty-ninth at ten AM. The board in the past has walked, used your own vehicles or used golf carts from Adams City High School. So is there, do we wanna just leave it to where everyone just makes their own decision? Or do we all wanna be united and walk or do golf carts or motorcycles or whatever? But just, just remember, if you're in a moving vehicle, we cannot throw candy to the participant or to the spectators. The way you can give candy is if you're walking. It's a city ordinance. And I believe, who was it last year? Was it you, Connie, you got a ticket or?
Along with councilman, well, anyway.
Yeah. So...
We all just...
I know there are policemen were coming and warning people, so...
Not me.
So I don't know. Do we, how do we wanna do it? Everybody on a golf cart or use our own? Cuz to me, I'm walking.
Can we use your?
I'm gonna walk with you.
Can we use your Corvette?
Yeah, I'm gonna use my Corvette.
I prefer a golf cart.
Yeah.
Same here.
Okay. So golf cart, golf cart, golf cart. Okay. So is there a possibility we can get three golf carts from the high school?
We can look into that for you.
Okay. Or see what we, how much it would cost to rent? Cuz in the past, I've known they've rented golf carts from MASC or whatever they're called over here. Okay, then, communications, just like to mention that again, Thursday will be a big day for, for the district as we go in front of the State School Board. And I hope you two gentlemen can be reading there and...
We'll keep practicing.
And all that. And we did attend the Historical Society luncheon on Sunday. I think there was like four of us there. No, I was the only board member there. Yes. So on there. But it's, it was pretty nice that the Yellow Rose have never been in there, so. If I ever get married, maybe they should all have my dance and stuff. So. But no, they did a real good job of it and there. So I don't know if you wanna add anything there?
Well, just before we adjourn too, I have to read some information into the records, okay? So at this time, I'd like to inform the Board of Education at the May ninth, two thousand seventeen board meeting of the following expulsions pursuant to board policy and Colorado revised statute. Student number one zero eight zero zero five seven, also student number one zero eight one two two eight, and student number one zero seven zero one three eight, that they are recommended for expulsion.
Okay. So any other communication?
I think that's all. And we apologize that that storm caused some damage to some of our buildings and primarily, you know, there was some flooding, some ceiling damages. And because of that, we decided to take one day to make sure that we fix everything. We were concerned about the safety of our students being in buildings when tiles were falling. So we will be on track for tomorrow. I believe that every single school will be open in our district, except for Kearney Middle School. That one still needs one more day. So we put the notification out to our parents and students.
Okay. So it just didn't hit the school district. I know this morning I went to work out in there and they said you couldn't walk the track at the rec center.
Really?
Yep. It just, wires were hanging all over the place. So it went through that. So it's not the, only the school district had its problems. Is there any other?
That's all.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? We're getting out too late, so.
Well, let's just continue on then.
So we are adjourned. Can we have roll call, Monica? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine ten.